Would you please stand and move the flag?
To the other side. You tricked us from yesterday.
Of the United States of America. Into the Republic, for just saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for our meeting. Well, next thing on your agenda is approval of minutes.
I missed a bunch. You want to say it again?
Yeah.
Didn't see anything exciting either, so. I make a motion, we approve the minutes from May thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Okay, Kristen's made a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting and Mark has seconded it. Oh, while those in favor. Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, the presentation of the main road scholar designation to Thomas Gregor of Monmouth Public Works. And I, uh, I, I, all I can say is that, you know, uh, a lot of public works is overlooked, uh, maybe as a department. But, uh, that, that, those, you guys are so, really so important to the town, to the, you know, our safety and everything. You think of the police department, fire department, all that stuff, you guys. But, but they. But those guys, they're, they, they're there and they, they have, they do a heck of a job, really. Uh, and, uh, they're much appreciated, although we don't appreciate them near enough, of course. So.
Um, yeah, I'll introduce, uh, Kami Sobeski.
Sobeski.
Sobeski, so, from, uh, Main Local Roads Chapter, who's going to take over the presentation?
Going to stand or?
Uh, yes.
So I'm Kami Sobeski. I work at Main Local Roads with Pete Coughlin. Uh, we're an LTAP center. Uh, we've been around for forty plus years. Every state has an LTAP center. And we're there to guide municipalities, town managers, public works, folks with trainings and helping with grants and culverts and, and all of that. Uh, and we have a program called Road Scholar. And the Road Scholar Program is, um, a series of workshops that we provide to the public works folks. We, um, have a series of various workshops that they need to take. They need to take seven out of the ten required workshops. And the rest can be electives, whether they're half-day workshops or full-day workshops. And takes a while, especially, uh, we're downstaffed. We've been downstaffed for quite a while. So we don't offer as many workshops as we used to, but we're gearing back up and trying to, trying to help these guys get recognized for their hard work. So with that, um, I'd like to recognize Tom Gregor. Tom has, uh, twenty-three years in public works. All of those twenty-three years right here in Monmouth. Congratulations. His, uh, spouse slash partner is Claudia. children, Ramada and Mike, granddaughters Kaylee and Jenny. He likes fishing and camping. And with that, I'd like to recognize Tom. He, uh, also received the letter that went to the town manager acknowledging this. As well as, um, these were all the classes that, that Tom's taken, which, as you can tell, are, are quite a bit. Uh, did I give it, give you a copy of that yet? That's the deal. And a copy of the letter to Justin. So if you'd like to come up and so here's the plaque recognizing Tom. And congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
And these are something I finally got Pete to open his wallet on. To get us these new pens, each with them. People get confused with them. And they're a highlighter.
Yep.
And a stylus.
Yep.
You can give these to your patients if you don't want them. Congratulations.
Yep.
Do you want to say sorry?
Although I have the exact day when he went to work. Tom recognized that.
Did that come from Pete?
That, that's the book that he used to carry in my pocket. Probably twelve or fourteen years before I retired nine years ago. And in here, it says when Tom went to work. I could not remember that, but I didn't have it in here. It was in the other day. Tom, man, we started work at the transport station. Before I forgot that now, too. That was back in February fifth, nineteen ninety-eight. And then, um, May thirteenth of ninety-nine, he went to work at public works, so he's actually worked just over twenty-four years. So I give him credit for another year. And Tom worked for me all those years until I retired. Tom's a good man.
And even my two granddaughters.
Thank you.
I will, I will.
Thank you to the board for recognizing and taking the time out of your getting to this, uh, the Road Scholars.
Yeah.
Uh, like Tammy said, are few and far between the last few years, so Tom to achieve it, it was quite, it wasn't surprise. She let me know recently and, um, I've only, you know, supervised him for a short time, but he's a wonderful worker guy to have around that's not electric to town and and everything is, is, is very beneficial. So, thank you again for the recognition and time tonight for them. Appreciate it. But I can't answer her, but you.
Have there been other Road Scholars or Tom?
In Monmouth?
Yeah.
Uh, myself, as I said, I think I was second or third in the whole state. I used to take classes. Every class come up, I would say, I had to take it.
Bruce Alford was.
Bruce Alford was, and I think Rodney's over your mind of them. That's all I can think of right now. I think it's a very good variant workshop, so you get a lot of, lot of information for peanuts, peanuts to go to.
Yep. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing you always. Miss Jenny, did you say hi?
Have a good night.
Good night.
Uh, next to our department reports and Dan, you want to?
Um, as you can see, uh, paving is complete, thankfully. Hudson Hall was completed, uh, Monday afternoon as well. Road striping has started. We're waiting on, um, stop bars and crosswalks at this point. We are still, uh, digging out from the May first monsoon, as I call it, the five inches of rain in twenty-four hours. We honestly haven't started one project yet this year that was on the calendar. We're still dealing with culvert stitches and washouts, uh, from that flooding and trying to repair them as best we can. So that when it rains hard again, we don't have more damage. Progress is a little slow on that. Weather has not been cooperative. Trucks have not been cooperative. We have free dump trucks set down. Um, and honestly, with, with the budget situation, wait, as we're waiting on the new budget before we can fix them due to the cost of the parts needed. So, um, we're a little cramped that way, but we'll, we'll get in there. Once we get through the, to the new budget, hopefully get some better weather. Uh, we hope through the rest of the summer and fall will be productive, so. So, other than that, we are, we're getting by.
And is there any plan to, to go out and build up the edges where the new pavement is? Paper that out with gravel. Some places I've seen there's four or five inch drop off.
Yes.
With that new tower is that?
It'll be, yeah, it'll, we may even start on as early as tomorrow. Uh, if not, it would be next week, the week after, we'll be attending to those.
Yep.
So, yeah, we gotta, that's definitely got some spots.
I have a public works related question, but it might actually be for the former public works guy. Because he's here and, uh, actually it was Hugh that brought up a question in our last meeting about the abandoned bridge down on Hypeys Road. What's the name of that road?
Carver Road.
And, uh, and I know that the abandonment, we were trying to figure out whether well, Hugh brought up some concerns about the response time from, uh, police and fire services, because they have to drive around to get to the other side. And I wondered if you could give us a little bit of background on the history of that and whether that was a concern of the residents at the time when the decision was made by the town back in the, I think that was probably in the eighties. Maybe the nineties, early nineties.
Yeah, it could have been. Well, my recollection, we go down there and talk to the people that lived there back then. It was probably fifty-fifty. They didn't want the tractor down there. They wanted to live by themselves. And yeah, no doubt the response time is going to be longer to get around, but I, I think the cost would be prohibitive to do anything with a bridge now. Other than, I don't know, you still use snowmobile?
We do.
Yeah. Always finds the snowmobile. No, there's any great amount of weight. And, and, and in high water times, I'm sure that's once or twice, three times a year, that bridge is underwater. Much water goes down through there.
I can tell you from the rain we had on May first, that bridge would have been about three feet underwater. That area was tremendously flooded.
Yeah.
So I think that planning to, to put a structure there to, to make the road accessible through using the hundred-year flood status that they use now for the water flow, I think it would be a tremendous structure. You know, have to put in there to accommodate the potential water flow.
My, my thought was this, not just, it's important for the response time, but there's more folks on that road now than there used to be. I thought. I mean, it's, it used to be almost nil. Now there's some folks down through there. I don't know what the exact count it is, but.
Four.
Is it four? It was zero.
Yeah, there's one brand new house built last year, so one from three to four. Minus one.
Minus one, I heard.
I think it rebuilt. That one didn't get rebuilt?
I don't know. Haven't been down there since.
Just thought.
Yeah.
Just circling back.
I know when I was a police officer to get, go from, uh, down by Town Farm Road or or get my plane down in that area, go, you, you would want to cut through there. I did, uh, my, we, when we could.
Well, now you can do it on snowmobile.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be nice to know even if it's a casual, if some anybody was in the area doing less, another bridge, you know, Ball Park and Wade Park, you know, oh, that would be X amount of dollars at least. Be nice to know what we'd be up against. Maybe it wouldn't be as bad as we think.
And we, we remember what they're paying for the Wagon Bridge? Remember that figure? Been a million.
You looking at me?
Yeah, because you, you talked to him. I don't remember.
I talked, I didn't talk dollars.
Okay.
I just wanted access and raise the bridge so we
I know.
Get under it.
Do your fish move.
I did not say that. Rescue only.
It's a public safety issue, of course.
And what these guys said, it seems like you want a suspension bridge.
Which is why, which is why they didn't want to raise it, because it would get tremendously more cost prohibitive. And even still, it's over a million bucks.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm all set. Yeah, that's more than a question.
Hey, uh, when can we drive on the Comston parking lot?
It's open here.
Done seasoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, good evening, uh, for the fire department, uh, we had Memorial Day parade services, pancake breakfast, everything went very well. We had beautiful weather, had a great turnout for our breakfast, almost two hundred people. Um, so it didn't seem like everything went well and was well attended. Uh, thank you for those that came out and breakfast. Uh, last day, uh, myself and Assistant Chief Mills presented scholarships. We had twenty-five hundred dollars in scholarships this year, between the Richard Mulligan and the Robert Benson Scholarship. About the four different individuals. Uh, Aisha was there as well to, to take pictures, so thank you. This past Sunday evening, uh, Assistant Chief Pollard, Lieutenant Bushy and I attended the firefighter one and two program banquet. That's, I've been saying this for, seemed like a year. It's been an eight-month program for two of our firefighters, uh, Matt O'Connell and Austin Smith. Uh, so they both successfully completed the program, about two hundred and fifty hours of training, very intense. Uh, and at, at the end of this month, they'll be going for their pro board certification. Um, last Thursday, about eighteen of us went over to Robert's funeral home for the uh, first annual first responder appreciation barbecue. Uh, again, that was well attended. He's fired, and that's where they're, so it's kind of nice for both cities to, or towns to, to co-mingle and, and, uh, have some downtime and fellowship, so it was all good. Uh, right in this month, uh, we've got a busy month. We've got three trainings scheduled, boat operations, uh, tomorrow night, we'll be out on Buck and Wogans. See boats buzzing around with fire trucks, uh, on the shore. That's us. While on Thursday, we'll do a water rescue training. And then, uh, the last Thursday of the month, we'll be doing water supply operations. We're going into our busy month, and so training with hopefully nice weather. Uh, within the next four to six weeks, uh, we're going to be meeting with a rep from ISO. Uh, I was contacted a couple of weeks ago, uh, from a gentleman out of Massachusetts, asking to, uh, pick up, look at the town's ISO rating for, for insurance purposes, so I'm hopeful we can maybe get our rating down a little bit. Uh, it's been I can't even tell you, probably early two thousand, maybe, the last time that was visited, so hoping with our new equipment, uh, we can show that we can provide good water service. Uh, we're also going to apply for the, uh, it's called the alternative water supply, uh, test. So we basically do water shuttle and show that we can pump so many gallons per minute, uh, in a certain timeframe. And that could benefit our residents outside the water district. So, you know, everybody that lives on camp roads or outside of a thousand feet of a hydrant, um, it could benefit them. So if we get the maybe dues, we'll make an announcement here, because I'm sure the insurance company is not going to chase you guys down to get you a premium reduced, but certainly, uh, if we get a new rate in, you can let your insurance companies know.
What's the, what's the audit? Like, is it an audit or what is it?
Takes, takes up four to six hours of work, where, uh, we have to fill out paperwork for each of our pumpers. And, uh, they look at other things at the fire station, uh, fight in, fire support, you know, destruction operations. Uh, they'll look at the pump tests, our annual pump tests and, uh, maintenance of the trucks and stuff like that. Then we have to prove, I think it's two hundred and fifty gallons per minute for like a fifteen-minute period or something like that. And same thing with the water supply test. That we have to set up tankers and then within five minutes, we have to show that we can flow that amount of water for that same timeframe. Um, I'm just not sure if that entails mutually town, so it's just us setting up our own water supply shuttle, but I'll get more info as we get closer to that. So I just put a flyer on the table there for our seventh annual month beach party. That's, uh, all ready to go. Tony's done a great job. We've solicited all the sponsors that we can. That's the list of businesses. And, um, we'll be getting shirts made up. Uh, the banner went up last night, uh, down by Beach Road. Hopefully you guys take down your two signs.
There, there, guys.
Thank you.
We were on the road right in early.
Assistant Chief Mills was very good. He didn't take them down and put the banner up. Left it up for one more night. Elections are going. Um, our board canoe race at three thirty, food vendors, five to nine-ish, uh, you know, live band this year. Again, uh, this one's the L.A. Harley Band from six to nine, fireworks at nine thirty. House, our, our junior firefighters will be selling popcorn. It should be a good time, but hopefully everybody comes out and we have good weather for it. And now the fire department's going to be switching gears now that we got all that done. Um, our next event's going to be a golf tournament. Um, that's scheduled for August eleventh. That'd be Meadows and Litchfield, and that's the, the, we are second annual sponsor, our nine eleven memorial as well as the new firehouse museum, uh, that we're currently undertaking. Um, so we're kind of combining those two committees and making it one, and that will be our fundraising summer effort. Will be this golf tournament, so we'll be getting flyers out, ask sponsors for that event. Um, speaking of that, um, we are still in the process of acquiring that property through purchase-sale agreement through Mary. She was here earlier, but I believe, but, um, we're still, still hopeful that that's all going to go through. I've got, uh, Bernie, uh, Lake and Dennis in out of Windsor that's currently working on our nonprofit status, so trying to do that first, so then I can go and enter into that purchase-sale agreement with the nonprofit entity, so everything's done legally and then we'll do the, uh, owner finance deal through Mary. Uh, currently she's still the owner, but, um, we're in the process of working through that. So hopefully in the next month or so, uh, we'll be able to make that happen. Excited about that. Then the last thing I got is just want to thank everybody that went out and voted last night. Uh, congrats to you guys, uh, for your reelections and just thank the citizens for continuing to sponsor the fire department and pass our budget. Appreciate it. That's all I got. Any questions for the fire department? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, and congratulations to you for reelection. Some of the discussion items, uh, community, uh, community night out has been held August first. Eighteen hundred police station. Our record is to break the two hundred, but that's my goal. Um, like to take a moment to thank Donna for all her hard work and organizing this and getting it up and running. Taking care of that. Donations came in to the fourth of July, if you work hard doing that. And I put this out to the, the fire department and the public works again this year to hopefully, um, have them show up with their equipment, so that the kids have, at your truck event.
What's the timeline again?
Uh, six o'clock. Um, as you've no, probably noticed, we've got the speed signs up and running around town and we've gotten a lot of good positive feedback on those, um, we, we have three speed signs. We only got two trailers to support the, the three signs, so one of our goals is to, is order some mounting brackets. So we can move one of those signs from areas around town to hotspots and just mount them on the telephone poles, like where the flashing light is coming into one thirty-two here on both ends, you know, this will read out your speed limit, so um, that's our hopes in the near future to, to, um, get those installed, so we can just move that one that doesn't have a trailer around. Use it, uh. Just posted on the, the two thousand thirteen Ford Taurus, um, put that out for bid today, um, sent it over to Laurie and Justin and it'll be posted on the town website as well as, um, our Facebook page. I did send a copy of the posting to company down in Massachusetts that purchases, um, retired cruisers. And hope to get a response from them. And that closes, uh, bids are due by June twenty-ninth at two P M., at which time the, the bids will be opened up. The contract for the shared chief's position here is in the lawyer's hands now. They're reviewing the document, uh, all thirty-two pages of it. Uh, soon as, soon as, uh, it's approved by the town's attorneys, then the, the document will come to you guys for review and for a whole self. That's where we're at with that. Um, I would say, um, Dan, get your, uh, trucks online as soon as possible when budget is passed and by the time you get them scheduled to get them work, your budget will be in effect. Get them, get them, get them, make the call tomorrow. And that's it. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you for the speed signs.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I got to tell you, Dana did all the work on that, doing, getting them up and running and did the research to program them and hook them up to the computers in the cars, so we can program them from the cars and download the the, the information that's necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some, I think is, it's a big
And the timing is perfect, because
New pavement.
Well, it's just new pavement and warm weather. People want to be outside.
Yeah.
And, and, and we get the influx, you know.
Influx.
Of in, influx of people.
Everything, so.
Alright, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, at the August first event will be the usual, uh, food and
Yes, well, she, she, she has improved our menu. We're going to have hamburgers, I see, and not just dogs.
So when I, when I write about it, I'll
Uh, uh, you'll get a flyer. We, we had a few issues with our printer, our copy machine, actually, so I couldn't get them out for, for this meeting, so you'll, you'll be getting flyers. Probably at the next meeting, but I won't be here. He'll have to hand them out.
Okay. Well, I, I was wondering about the, the, the flashing radar signs, uh, for the schools. Are they working?
Yes.
But only during school hours, right?
Because it's an hour.
During, yeah, during the school, uh, drop, drop off and pickup.
Yeah.
And, uh, sometimes with the weather we've had, the, the, the batteries die on because there's no, sometimes.
Well, that must have been what I went through the other day. I was thinking, it should be flashing anyway, right?
Well, how fast were you going?
That horse.
Yeah.
Right, then, uh, uh, blackboard report.
I just, I have two things. First of all, the Monmouth boys won today. One to nothing. They beat Socapy. I was checking on that and the girls are playing at seven, so keep our fingers crossed for the game. Yeah, no, this is re, yeah, state game Saturday, so, um, these are regional finals. Paul Dale, so we're keeping our fingers gone, yeah, crossed for that big, big game, so. The second thing I had, I had a question, um, by somebody that um, I think they were remembering one of the conversations we had about, uh, when we went to third-party inspectors. I think one of the things that we had discussed was the fact that when we went to third party inspectors. I think one of the things that we had discussed was the fact that if it was like a deck and it didn't need a bunch of inspections, that it was possible that we might do something about one inspection, but because of the limited hours that we have code guy out to do that, that we went to complete third party. So I think that some people might have still been remembering that sort of conversation, but that and I was asked that question and I said, well, my recollection is this. I confirmed my recollection. And so, yes, it's all third party, which, you know, the code enforcement officer isn't going out to inspect when building permits are issued. So right, that's what we did. And that's what we've been doing. So
Yes. Paperwork doesn't reflect that yet.
The paperwork doesn't reflect that.
Still using the same permit I used.
Okay, so that's something that needs to be changed. And is that on the radar from when you were there? Helping?
No, it was not on the radar.
Okay, so.
And it wasn't. I've been, I've been working with him to get him accredited.
Okay.
He took a test today, so I was with him for a couple of hours.
Okay, we need to update.
The other communities are now running into the same problem that I work for.
Yeah.
What they're doing. And I told Andy this today, that they they're not issuing the permit to the individual until they can show that they have a third body inspector already retained. So Andy will know that they understand that they have to have
Okay.
already inspected.
Okay.
Because I've been getting more and more after the fact.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
It's very hard for me to do an after the fact.
Yeah.
I can't.
Can't see what was inside the walls or wherever. Yeah. Okay. Reflect third party.
Does the paperwork reflect the we established a new minimum? I think we said, you know, if you're gonna do less than two hundred square foot shed or something.
That's the state.
You don't.
Or come.
Yeah, you don't.
In front of two.
Right. And so does the paperwork reflect that?
That's always.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that. I'll send Justin an email and say we need to make sure we get this done. So so there to stop that confusion because that probably
He does have a list right on his desk against everybody that comes in for a permit.
Yes, exactly.
Over the day.
Got it. And and other communities get third party.
For that now, you have to supply codes officer, the name of the third party inspector, even checks to make sure he's the current third party inspector. And we'll only accept the letter from that third parties.
So they'll get a letter from the third party.
I always have to. I have to supply.
Okay, okay. All right. Perfect. That sounds good. All right, I will get an email together to hopefully stop that confusion.
Have them call me if there's a question.
Yeah, all right, perfect. Thank you.
I've got a couple of things. We had a I saw a paper version of the survey for the economic development committee on cannabis marijuana at the voting place. But I didn't see anything online. Chris pointed this out that there are still some people who perhaps didn't vote or perhaps skipped it when they came through. And they want to take the survey. And so another question for the town manager, I was hoping you can be here tonight, but that's okay. But another question is, can we get that posted? To the town website.
So I asked about that. I spoke to you and I think person you've said Lori knew nothing about it. So anyway, Reagan has the ability to post on Facebook and the town website on under the economic development, and so does Justin. They have the ability to post those things. So
Okay, so I maybe I'm confused, but I thought at the last meeting, we're gonna ask the town manager to put together a Survey Monkey type of thing. So it's electronically tabulated. Post it to the but no, it hasn't. But and that's okay. It's not a big deal. Because we haven't done any tabulation and we're not trying to hurry things along. We're you know, we've got some time. And it's gonna be the honor system anyway.
Yeah.
But maybe we can ask the town manager to put it together. And if we want to spend some time with Reagan doing that, that's fine. And then give it some time while it's been posted to the town website. So people have a chance to
And the other thing, I mean, you can post just a PDF of that. Because, you know, I've done that before. You can post just a PDF and they can print it and download it rather than, you know, and drop it off.
Sure.
Or have them at the town office. I think the better plan was
Sure, they have them at town office on paper.
Where you know,
Like leftover.
At the exit as opposed to the entrance because
I think there were many less over.
People did pay up on the Oh, good. Okay, good.
Well, I'm sure we can direct people to go to the town office.
I was saying that.
Yeah.
Got a good response on her.
That's good. Yeah, it's good to know.
The other thing, and this is while we're on the topic. You know, there was a personal attack made by one resident of Monmouth, a personal attack on the economic development consultant Reagan. That was beyond the pale. And certainly anyone can ask questions about decisions the select board has made. But and we certainly welcome people to come and make a personal statement here anytime. But to have sort of a backhanded type of Photoshop type of drama. I'll be polite. Posted on Facebook against someone who is doing good work for the town. Is just not what we expect from what we expect from people in Monmouth. What I can tell you is that had we not had Reagan, we would not have a yes vote on the question about updating our TIF. That now goes to the next step where we we're one step away from being able to honor the the last survey we did with being able to to include trails as a potential TIF expenditure. Or using the fire department budget as a as a potential TIF expenditure. And that was all good work that Reagan did. We are still looking at moving forward with some economic development on two oh two at the former Knowles lumberyard site and some other parcels along that two oh two quarters, not just about one business. And we're also looking at an arts district potential in the downtown area that would include Comston Hall and the museum. And we I think we've got a bargain because in house, we have a consultant who has experience doing TIF stuff. And working the network with the state to see these things all the way through. So to have, I mean, people people can exercise their First Amendment rights. That's perfectly fine. But to have some criticism leveled against one particular consultant for the town is irony of ironies. And unfair. Where was it posted? Facebook. Well, and fortunately Doug and I were tagged on that one, so we became aware of it, but wasn't worth commenting on. Except here at this meeting. And as I said, I will look forward to the first time that that particular individual decides to come to a public meeting and make a public comment. I haven't talked to her.
Is it on the town? Which which Facebook page?
This individual's own Facebook page.
I didn't write maybe it on Facebook enough, but I didn't see anything. Because I know you have a lot of I usually don't get negative stuff. Or even stuff that changes my position on the select word, but I guess sometimes maybe I don't get this person's Facebook.
They're probably not friends with this person. Might just, but if he tagged you. But if you weren't on the day that you were tagged, you probably just missed it and it's in your thread somewhere. You just gotta go back in your history and you might see that.
Okay.
Who would not spend that much time on Facebook?
On another note. It was just a question that maybe we can turn into an email to the town manager. When the audit is final for the previous fiscal year, I'm hoping we can schedule a meeting for the auditor to come in and
We got that email. It was signed, so it's final.
Okay.
It's not just in draft. We got that email.
Good. So I'd be interested in asking a few questions of the auditor. If you could find a way to reschedule meeting.
So who are you gonna take care of?
I'll follow up on these.
On the survey.
That's something I'll ask him too. So
You're whatever.
Yep, I've got three things so far.
Dexter, public comment?
I'm gonna ask Dan something about the statue down south. Civil War statue.
Yes.
Is there any way we could maybe remove those shrubs on the granite steps going up? The person that works with granite, who's are famous for going in and undermining the foundation of granite. I don't know if they were put there in memory of someone, so I'm worried a little about that. But if they were you just eliminate them?
Yeah.
Just interesting you bring that up. I was approached by Donna Moore of the Legion asking the same question.
Yeah.
I just hadn't run it up the side pole yet per se.
I don't remember them being there for any specific person either. I think that somebody put them there thinking that they were doing something nice with landscaping, but they look so overgrown. And they're also hard to to manage. So, you know, if we remove them and we wanted to put something back there for landscaping, speak with Margot about what she'd recommend there for something that'd be manageable and not take up a whole lot of space, but would add something nice to the area.
Or have a root system that could
Exactly.
The structure.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that that
Other than there's no
Is Don aware of any significance?
No.
He told when I could just, where it's town property, I could just pull them out. I said, I don't have any objection to it. I just want to make sure I check with somebody before I put on something.
I don't remember anything, do you?
No.
I mean.
Would think that like Don would be
Don would know. I mean, essentially, anybody that's done things there have been, you know, veterans like Lehman's bench. Yeah.
So another note. Those nice, and I don't even know what they are, the nice two shrubs on either side, but they're getting a little large. Could we bring those in?
I'm picturing what's on either side.
Really attractive shrubbery.
I'm just trying to think of what's on the other side because I every time when I walk by, I just notice those evergreen things that are horrific.
Nice shrubs out behind on either side of the
Are there lilacs back there or they? But they're not lilacs.
But it's just they're getting
I'll have to look.
Big. I wondered is something we should trim?
Trim.
During the presentation, you could barely see.
Yeah, it's getting it's getting hard for the guys to go back there and fire the
Oh, yeah. Well, that's something.
Weeks ago, they were like yeah, trim the back edge for sure. It's something by the stones. I said, I didn't know. Then like gone out of the blue called it. And we gently trimmed whatever they are around the statue, but I was like, just make sure before we Right, because I didn't know somebody put those there in memory of somebody. And a lot of that stuff's in memoriam, so
Yeah.
I was mentioning it cautiously.
I don't remember anything, and I would think that the Legion would know if something was done there more than
If Don, I mean, if Don
Don doesn't remember them.
It's older.
Yeah, I've maybe if we double check with Don and say, can you confirm? Nobody did this in memory.
I was saying to cut those down.
No, 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 but the 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 shrubbery. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And I'll notice those next when I walk by the next time, figure out what they are in behind there. Haven't paid attention to those. But I think that's something else that Margot could, you know, offer his advice on trimming things. So
That and or David Hamblin. University.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Either one.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
I'll wait a week, two, couple weeks, see what if there's anybody's communities remember your interest and might say step up with some information. So we'll put it on the radar.
Usually when you donate or you plant something for somebody else, you put a little plaque somewhere.
Yeah.
Like around school here or something and
Yeah, we made the flags. Some of these. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Speaking of growth and bushes. What's what's the deal with the big two hundred year old oak trees on Main Street that could be in a public way that's half dead? Is there anything? I know it's DOT roadway for Main Street.
Yeah, it does fall to DOT. Their road there right away. So it's either DOT or the homeowner on those.
He keeps an eye out. They came to our house and took a tree down.
Really?
No, it's not a good spot. So
They've actually started to program for apparently they had an incident somewhere up in the northern part of the state where a branch came down and stabbed a car and there was serious problem. So they're starting to take that a little more seriously in terms of spinning out the stuff that overhangs the road that could potentially be a hazard. I know that on one thirty five, they've been up from from like two oh two and went through all the way down to where it hits one thirty two. They, you know, past couple of years, they have been you know, sending a crew or two out to take some of the big stuff out. It's overhang. And in the winter, apparently it also lets more sunlight into the road, so it it melts faster.
Well, and it's roots. In our case, our oak tree was where it left the road.
Yeah.
So it's roots too.
I'm talking about the Masonic oak and that tree. Lodge is looking into having a cut. They know if there was a program or perhaps DOT, maybe we should call first before going through that expense of having build and some ground.
It's definitely bigger than any chainsaw we have.
Can we can we talk to the local the district DOT people and see if
Yeah, the best thing to do is just place a call to DOT region to bring the to the message deck. And they root the call from there.
Yeah.
If you want them, one number, I can give it to you.
DOT region two. Yeah, it's six two four three 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 nine. Got it.
It might be just worth a quick call.
It's definitely worth a call where it's rated there right away. Anything in there right away is worth a call.
It's definitely a hazard. The talk I've been there, there's some really big ones. It's coming down. It's just we can save a couple of grand then.
There would come down plants in front of the land.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Next is to hear about an update about the age friendly minority survey.
Should you want me to go here, be at my seat?
Yeah. Well, now you can see you. Yeah.
Well, I'm Mary the podcast for
Well, I'm Mary the podcast for anybody that wasn't here the last time, I introduce myself, um. Thank you for your encouragement of my moving forward, forward with making Monmouth age friendly, which is a AARP designated. Language, uh, where communities are working on eight domains of livability. Um, I did a survey and um, sounds like, like it's got better traction than yours did, and. Um, two hundred people responded. Um, it was uh, in the community advertiser, which actually uh, through the survey. Found out the community advertisers, the number one way that people in Monmouth get their information, that's good to know. And they wish the town website was kept up to date so they could get more from there. Anywho, um, so it was in the advertiser, there was a website for the survey, there was a paper survey, the paper survey was. At the town office, the quick shop, and the library. Um, so over two hundred responded, only a hundred and sixty-eight were completed because not every. Uh, or were counted because a hundred and sixty-eight were what was completed out of the two hundred, so people. Stopped it somewhere along the line, and then it didn't get calculated, so they couldn't count those. Um. I did take statistics, one class in college, I didn't do well, but I. Took the raw data and I'm gonna give you brief support, there's gonna be a really fancy support coming out in a couple weeks. Uh, through Humane, they took that information and um. Is putting it together for me, which is great, but just wanted to give you this quick one. So sixty-five percent of the respondents were over. It, oh, so the survey, for anybody that didn't see it, is um, ask people about. What's it like to live in Monmouth, do you feel safe, do you um? Have transportation, all, all kinds of questions about living in town. So uh, over fifty perc, over sixty-five percent were over fifty that responded. Um, really interesting things that came out of this, eighty-three percent have, that of respondents have smoke detectors on each floor, I thought that was awesome. Ninety-six percent said that they were warm enough in their own homes, which I love, love, love hearing. My worry is that we didn't capture some of the people that don't go in these public places, or don't go online, and therefore couldn't fill out their survey. They did say they were warm enough, ninety-six percent, although a lot of people said it's really expensive to. Be able to stay warm. Um. Almost ten percent, or ten percent said that they could use help paying for fuel. Fifty-four percent said they'd like to be more social, and some of those um, suggestions. That people gave for being more social were to have a community center, a place to walk, a dog park, dog park, um. More summer activities, um, somebody mentioned how much they love the um, beach, the Fourth of July, and uh. What is it, this is coming up in August?
Community night out?
Yeah, community night, how much they like those, and they wish there was more of that, some things at the beaches, some other things in town. They like to see lectures, workshops, um, accessible trails, group activities, volunteer activities, more summer activities. Uh, forty percent of all respondents said that they would like to participate in a day long volunteer event, such as roadside cleanup, painting, planting, a potluck. Public places in Monmouth that need accessibility improvements. Are an elevator entrance, oh, the elevator entrance at Comston gets very icy in the winter. Um, improve the sidewalk on Main Streets, many people said that. Extend the sidewalks, more sidewalks, need a public rest from year round, I don't know if the one at the boat, at the beach in Monmouth is open year round. We have a yet, we have a known, we have a yes.
It's there, it's not locked in the winter.
Is it flush, is it flush?
No.
It's a retreat?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the.
Oh.
Uh, okay.
It's a, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Okay.
The seat's pretty cold.
Uh, you might be talking about, you know, in town. Stacked or, or probably cloudy, several.
It is, it is cloudy.
Not maintained.
Gets pretty nasty in there all the time, a lot of ice fish.
The ice fish.
Oh, really?
Uh, okay, okay, TMI.
No, it's not TMI, this is the real, this is real world stuff.
Improve the back roads, public bathroom at the Wilson Pond Beach and boat launch, and or boat launch. More seating at the town beach, maybe benches, so we're, we're looking at the people who responded, as I said, are sixty-five percent, fifty and older, so this is. Thinking more about some seniors in our community. Um, as well, so, for example, uh, seating at the town beach, right now you sit on your towel, you know, you don't really, or swing. You don't really have accessible seating. Uh, greater enforcement on speed, speed on Main Street, and a couple of other uh, people said they wanted their street, which was not main. Um, the general store at Apple Valley could use ramps. People would like outdoor spaces developed, a park, biking and walking paths, trails, butterfly garden, more sidewalks, better sidewalks, community garden. In North Monmouth playground that isn't at the school, more group, group, group. Activities for kids like hiking, fishing, and games. Uh, forty-five percent have a medical directive, fifty-five percent don't, I thought that was interesting, health and wellness fair, forty-four percent. I'd like to see that. Um. Two more, uh, older people, are older people respected in Monmouth, yes, sixty-five percent. Some of the time, thirty-one percent, no, four percent, so that made me feel really happy, and it also, people love living in this town, which I. Really was really happy to read about, um. Uh, many people, the, a lot of questions, the report will be very interesting, one question was, where do you want to, uh? As you age, where do you want to live, and a huge percentage said right here in my own home, so that was really nice. Um, lots of comments about what is one thing that would. Uh, improve Monmouth for you, and that, that list will come out, and that'll be interesting as well. It was very positive, and so the, there, the first inaugural meeting of Age Friendly Monmouth Committee. Is, I believe, I sent out an email to lots of people, and I believe it's the twenty eighth. Um, uh, June at Comston Lower Level, from eleven thirty to twelve, there I invited. A lot of department heads, Justin said you have that time as an employee to go to that meeting, and to go to monthly meetings. The reason I invited all the many department heads is because all of this affects all of you, I think there's safety in there, there's um. Housing in there, there's parks and rec, there's. Roads and walkways, I, I think that as many people that represent the town, as well as individual. Citizens in the town should be on the committee, so. I'm hoping the people I sent invitations to will respond, I've only heard back from Anfield, and very few, if any, from the town. So this is a warning. Track you down, keep you. Eleven thirty to twelve thirty. And we'll meet, um, I think during the day, it makes the most sense, um. About once a month. Any questions, comments?
Thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome.
I know, but I'm not. You know, I didn't respond, cause uh, you're asking for a monthly commitment that this cat has zero time for, and every time I sign up for a committee. Which I belong to several already, and I'm out four nights a week, which I appreciate the daytime.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But with my full-time job.
You have another time.
You have a job?
You have a job. I'm a volunteer chief, I'm not, I'm not full-time. I'll do my best to make appearance once in a while.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, and if you can't make it, if someone else from your department, though really, anybody. Anybody that represents the department is perfectly fine, I, I connected to you, cause I know that you're the. Poobas, but, and I sent one to Kristen and Doug maybe, I don't know if everybody got one, but you guys are on by each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Head Pooba Dan. Um. Uh, is it, is it the rec department that maintains the bathroom down beach during the summertime?
No. No, it's us.
It's you guys.
Yeah.
What would it take to do it year round?
Um, same as it takes in the summer, just. Uh. You know, uh, as was mentioned, the ice fishermen are, uh.
Uh, they're.
They're, they're quite the crew.
Uh, preaching to the choir, I leave one of my restrooms on the island open. All winter long. For those guys, cause it's better for them to be doing it there than. Yeah. So, uh, so I hear you. I hear you.
It used to be body.
Well, and I think that if we do change. And come up with a plan for somebody that's gonna be the uh, janitor for all the buildings, which has been a topic of discussion in the new fiscal year. That would go back on to.
That duty.
That duty, so that's. That's what my assumption would be to that, so. But it'll always be that, because the only time you have water and flush is when the beach is open.
Correct.
And, and in the garage. Area, and that has to be shut off in the wintertime, so there will never be, you know, a flushable. Scene there in the wintertime, so.
It's me.
Yeah. Yep.
Seat's gonna be cold.
So I'd like to come, come back when I have a, or, or at least. Make available to you the, the fancy schmancy report, she asked for pictures of Monmouth and everything, so I think it'll be a nice professional. Report that we can put on the town website.
Yeah, and that'll be great, I think when people do surveys, seeing the results of them is really important to them, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Oh, next is to consider appointing Doug Ludwig.
Who, who?
Who?
Mr. Chair, I heard that this individual might be a speaker on Academy Road.
It was just a rumor, I've heard the same thing.
Uh, I make a motion, we uh, appoint Doug Ludwig to the eighteen fifty-six Monmouth Academy Building face.
Oh, there's a motion by Ken, a second by Joe to appoint. This guy, I knew what.
Just make sure you're staying.
I don't think you can vote, well, yesterday you could, but you can't vote today.
And then. Don, uh, this is, uh, well, next thing is the eighteen fifty-six Monmouth Academy Project Update.
I'm Dawn Hardston. Congrats to. Guys. Just wanna bring folks up to date on where we stand on. And building. What we've been trying to do with our budget. Be. As we move through budgets. Um, right at the moment, um, through. May billing, we've incurred costs of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars out of the one point seven million that was. Approved. That leaves us about eight hundred thousand to. Continue working on what we consider phase one, phase one included the demolitions. Um. And. Of the, of the. Period buildings, and then demolition of the interior of the building. Um, that's pretty much down to studs and brick at this time. Um. Being. Bell tower. Um. Windows being installed, uh, replaced. The exterior masonry. The trim on the exterior. And then, once the exterior is done, moving into the primary area of the building, which is the, with the library. Getting that to a point where. Um, we can start to see what the building's gonna be able to become. Um. The mechanicals and plumbing and. Electrical should all be stubbed in and, and ready. Move forward with phase two. Um, at this point, um, work is continuing, I was talking with, um. Steve Brown today. These are clerk of the works. And they're finding a lot of rot. In the bell tower around where the, where the cap was, um, but they're forging ahead, and they'll, they'll, you know. Reuse what they can, replace what they have to, um, we're looking at some. How to manage costs as far as that goes, I think we've had some structural systems with um, some beams from a local. Building. To help with replacement of structural damage. Yeah. The masonry. Is in fairly good shape. At this point, um, what they're looking at is. Trying to get a mortar color that, that matches, that's gonna be a, a process, would take about a month to get. That determined what we're gonna move forward with as far as color and whatnot, some of the cost savings that we. Focusing on through this whole process is not doing anything, for example, we didn't see a lot of activity over the winter. And that's because, you know, we wanted to control costs for heat, we didn't wanna, we don't wanna spend money that we don't have. Um, you know, on temporary items. Um, and the same goes with, with the masonry, we're trying to control the cost on that, so they just re, uh, removed just this week. Uh, a double wide, double width chimney, and are recovering those bricks to use to, to start. Repairing the facade and the, and the structural loss here. Um. So that process will take probably. Getting moving on that a good uh, two to four weeks if all goes well. But during that time, he's gonna continue the next nowadays, continuing to work on the roof, the sopits. Um, and. If I'm, I think that's pretty much the focus right at the moment, because the, oh, and the windows, the window should be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, the windows.
Couple of weeks out. They've also, um. Of the information. Is being evaluated for doors and, and so, so our goal is to get the exterior. Particularly there. Um. As far as the, the. Paint that's on the exterior of the building, we're investigating, I just spoke with a fellow today, uh, maybe sandblasting. But it's not actually sandblasting, even some river material. Getting that taken care of, so we don't have to remove that masonry, it can be, can be saved. Our goal, our goal ultimately for phase one. Is to have as much done as possible, we've, we've incurred costs in the last couple of years, and I'm sure everybody knows this, but. It's the cost of what we've been doing is about forty percent higher than what we anticipated. Because of the, the, um, with the economy went. When we get done with what we see as phase one, we'll have about sixty thousand dollars left over to start moving into doing. The finish work. Now, we also have some fundraising that's occurred, we wanna update as much as possible on fundraising.
So at this point, um. The last time I pulled this uh, spreadsheet where we've been keeping track of donations, we have about sixty thousand dollars, and. There's grants that, um, I've applied for, and I've got. Several more that I'll be applying for, and. We've been very fortunate with, you know, Kennebec Savings Bank gave us twenty-five thousand dollars, um. Uh, local summer resident gave us fifteen thousand dollars, you know, so we've been pretty fortunate, uh, and in that, and then. Through the donations of people for, you know, five dollars here, ten dollars there, we've been able to build up, uh, G and E Roofing gave us five thousand. Dollars, I think, yes, five thousand, you know, tech stack, so there's a lot of. Um, you know, ideas that pop into my head and letters that get sent on a daily basis, and the windows, um. That people can bu, purchase a window and have it dedicated or in memory of, or however they want it, uh, for instance, my family's doing it, um. In honor of the Sam Bourne and Gilman families, because we've had six generations walk through those doors there, and several folks in town have. Purchased windows, and we'll be able, we'll have plaques engraved that will be next to the windows, um. That's been a nice little, um. Thing that we've been able to do. I get excited about the other fun stuff that's happened in there, when we found slate that people had written their names in, on, scratched into the slate from. that people had written their names in, on scratched into the slate from nineteen forty-four to about nineteen sixty-eight or something like that. So we have two pieces of slate, one that has no etching on it and one that is scratched in with a bunch of names and, um, salvaged and saved in my mother's barn upstairs in a safe spot that we'll put back into the building. Um, and, uh, but I have to say that we've really surrounded ourselves with the right people on this between Nickerson and O'Day and, um, Paul Lewandowski and Paul Turk, the architects. They are as devoted to this building as all the rest of us on the committee. Steve Brown, if nobody has ever met Steve Brown, he's one of the most wonderful people and his knowledge of building and, and, uh, has been great. I'm so happy he retired and that he can be our, our eyes and because he did it for years. And then Dawn's experience, not only with her spreadsheets, which I would not be, have the first ability to do this, to keep us a track of what we've got, um, and where we're going with our spending. Dr. Bouji from the museum, Paul Rube from, you know, his knowledge of where all the sewer lines are. We've, we've put the right people on this committee to really keep it going in the right direction. I can't say enough good things about that. Um, you know, and, and we're doing everything in our power, um, to keep this um, moving forward. So we'll have about a hundred.
Yeah, optimum cost.
Exactly.
You know, for example, the, the sewer system, we're investing in having somebody go the old lines. Possibility that they're using it. Money well.
Yep.
Well spent.
Exactly. So, you know, we've, we worked really hard on that. We meet, we meet once a month and, um, you know, we've, um, you know, right early on, we made the decision with the, uh, architect not to do anything on the second floor because it didn't make sense to spend a hundred thousand dollars on an elevator for nine hundred square feet of space. So all the mechanicals will be on the second floor. And, um, you know, that, that wasn't gonna give us really a lot of anything. Um, and the, um, the daily discoveries inside that building are pretty amazing, you know, with carpenters' names written inside of things. How carpenters like to sign or write things. So, you know, we, it's been like a little treasure. Yeah, treasure tre- chest in there. So, um, but if anybody has any questions, um, you know, we've we're bringing Doug on to be, you know, not that we haven't had a quorum, well, only once we haven't had a quorum, but that was an odd situation. But, um, you know, Doug's been at every meeting, but he couldn't vote. Now, now he can vote and we'll have a quorum. So, um, but it's, it's, for me, it's an exciting time and, um, we've getting pictures together to put together. I'm going to put together a, a PowerPoint presentation with like a slideshow to be able to show the stages of where we've been, what we find, where we're going. So people can visualize that and also have that for people to see, um, to motivate people to donate to the project. So.
And I think what I, what I'd like to do, and I think we talked about this, is some of the pictures on the alumni page or something like that. So he could into the building and, you know, or if they're curious, he can go and, and look and see what it's, what it's gone through.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, one of the super discoveries was when they took down the suspended ceiling was the original plaster ceiling was almost in pristine shape. So, you know, little surprises like that, that we find and go, oh, wow, this is gonna be amazing. And then just when you're inside that library space, how grand it is and how beautiful it really is. And the floor, the only thing that ugly carpet did was protect the maple.
Question on phase one, phase two, you said, uh, phase one is all the exterior, you know, and go inside first floor, um.
Yeah, the, the library.
Library. And you said you'd have sixty thousand left over after stage two?
No, af- after phase, phase one, we have what's left, um.
In the one point seven.
Out of one point seven, we'll have sixty thousand. To go towards phase two, to doing the, the finishes.
Right, exactly.
That's my question. So, so phase one, we've exhausted all but sixty plus another sixty in fundraising, which I know is in a work in progress.
Yeah.
So going into phase two, you have exhausted the one point seven minus sixty. And you got one twenty to throw towards phase two, plus anything in the coming year or whatever with fundraising. Complete the first floor level.
Yeah, and that's the only, yeah.
And that includes all utilities and mechanicals.
Yeah, everything will, if I'm not mistaken, everything will be stubbed in. I mean, Steve was here. He has a little bit more information on that, but he had an emergency at home. Um, but the goal is, is to get everything stubbed in. And if, if things go well, like with the masonry or whatever, um, you know, any, any cost savings that we can find, uh, will go towards doing the finish work. And I'm, you know, a major goal is of course the mechanicals first, you know, and, and getting, you know, at least I hate using the word temporary lighting because again, that implies that we're spending money on something that's not permanent thing. Um, but getting lighting in there that would make it, you know, accessible and.
Is there a projection for completing this project so that it's occupiable on the first floor to start using it as a community?
That is, that is a question that is being discussed right now between the architect and the general contractor or construction manager. And we should be able to have something along those lines within maybe a month or so. Okay. Because that's our goal is to get is, is, you know, as much as possible, get as close to that certificate of occupancy as possible. Um, you know, if, if there's a way to get, you know, the plumbing in, um, if you, because the, the kitchen, for example, is, is going to be, what do they call it? A
A catering kitchen.
Catering kitchen. Um, that can hold off a little bit. We're, we're trying to, to get to the point where it's as usable as possible, as quickly and efficiently. And it's.
How big of a meeting room are you picking?
That whole entire library.
Oh, it's, it's a.
Bigger than this space.
Well, gosh, yes.
Bigger than our main room at the firehouse.
Yeah. Oh, it's huge in there. It's huge.
If at any time you wanted to, wanna check it out, um, we can, can, because it's really, it's a grand space. And what's nice too is the, the backside of it with the wings. That's a nice space too. There'll be, you know, um, mechanical room, bathroom, like a three stall bath. But, um, you, um, one door, but each, each stall has a, a full door.
Full partition.
Rooms with, yeah, with a couple of sinks, um, and then.
Archives room.
The archives room. Do you wanna talk about the archives room? Um, give an idea of what you're hoping it will.
Yes, uh, Doug Ludwig is, uh, working with the museum on everything we have that belongs to Monmouth Academy. We have all the old paintings that Harry Proctor had done as a famous alumni. Uh, Monmouth Academy will go back into that hall space as it was. We have, we have, uh, books that record some of the history of the academy back to eighteen thirty-seven. And, uh, all those will go into the archives as well as all of our other information we have available. And photographs and old diplomas. So we do have a lot of interesting items.
Is there a website right now that exists that grounds the project?
Not at this point. That is what my computer guy, Jeff has generously volunteered to set up a, a website that we can put all those pictures on. So it's outside of Facebook, but it will be such that you'll be able to go on and see all these photographs and, um.
The general contractor superintendent there literally does daily reports and you, you know, probably four, five, six
Yeah.
Pictures a day to show what's going on. And I'm gonna try to, to get the prior ones so we can see it from the, from there and starting.
And we have some that we took ourselves when we've been up there for walkthroughs. So, um, that's the next step is to put together, you know, the website and, um, I always want to make sure I'm not, you know, stepping outside my box. I have everybody's approval to do the things that are all stored in my head to go forward. So that's the next thing, saying, can I make this website? Can I put all these pictures on there? Is everything okay that we can do this?
I would think a website would be essential for fundraising.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. And for people, um, at, at, um, Mayfair, I had two people tell me, well, you're tearing it down. And I said, no, no, we're not. We're taking apart the bell tower because we have to, to see what's there and rebuild it. So no, it's not getting torn down.
Actually, at the moment, what's been taken down is all laid out in this proper pat- pattern in, inside. Again, there, the, the goal is to reuse what we can, replace what we need to. And again, shop around town for, for, you know, whatever's available for us to offset.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, the Nick Snow Day for their superintendent's provided the right guy for that.
Yeah, yeah. He's, he's amazing. So, you know, I, I can't say enough about the people that we have working on the project. And the only thing I'll say about, you know, the budget shortfall is that the fact that we came up with a number in you know, twenty twenty, you know, the end of twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one, when it was on.
I think it was the year prior.
Twenty, it was twenty.
Nineteen twenty.
So, um, when you look at the shortfall, it's that forty percent. When you do the math on that one point seven, that forty percent of labor and construction costs going through the roof is what our shortfall is. Had that not happened to all of us, we would be cruising to the end with not, you know, uh, with the, with the fundraising being gravy and having, um, you know, that being extra to pay off the loan with. So that's the part that, you know, I spent Friday, I spent twenty minutes talking to a lady from Andersgog and Bank. So I, uh, that, you know, the every avenue I can find to look for that to bring us to the end.
Sorry, but I thought there was a couple hundred thousand second demo cost that wasn't factored in. Or wasn't there an additional cost for having the contractor come back for additional demo?
No.
It wasn't.
No, we did not let almighty waste touch within six feet of that building. Because what do they do? They do demolition. If they had gone anywhere near that building, we would be having to fix what they wrapped.
Reconstruct the end walls.
Yeah, it would have been horrible. So.
No, that's okay. I mean, it was, it, the beginning of the project was very confusing.
Yeah.
You know, there was a lot of change, that changes going on, town manager, you know, all of that. So it was kind of, it was chaos.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When the, when they came back, it was a matter of they did not do what they were supposed to do with the sewer lines, capping things off. So they came back and they had to do that.
In order to get their.
To get their, to get their last.
I think that's what I had heard some, but there was some figure thrown out that if I can come back and bring all this equipment back, it's gonna cost you this amount of money.
Well, that was about the sewer line that he did not cap correctly.
Yeah.
You can't just pour concrete in sewer lines.
He made decisions based on other areas, but he, he had the opportunity to check out, um, the requirements for Kennebec Water District and, and our sewer system and, and opted not to at the time. And so we, there was no extra cost. Um, the balance of the demo, the refining demo um, was part of the phase one budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I can understand where you were confused by that. Honestly, so were we. While we managed it, so.
But, you know, we've had the right people to, to manage some of the crazy things that pop up when you're doing a project for the town. Because this isn't like working on your house, making a decision like that. It has to be step one, step two, step ten, you know, to get there. So.
And, and the, the goal is again, with every decision that we make for money spent, trying to make sure that it's, it's you know, for the, for example, the pictures that we're getting, now we're able to do pictures because we're moving forward. It was hard to, to just show everything being torn down, you know, and, and getting to the point where we can start to reconstruct. But everything that we're doing, we're trying to make sure that it's a permanent step forward. And, you know, we, we have folks in place that are really paying attention to that stuff. So.
Well, our department will be interested in borrowing the meeting of the future.
Yeah. You know, this.
I mean, there's, it's going to be a great space to use for me, I think many things. And that's with Paul Design and John Turk. Their goal is, they understand that we're repurposing the building. We're not, we're not um, restoring the building. We're repurposing it.
Yeah.
With, with, you know, hats that's to its history. You know, making sure whatever we can, you know, to, to keep it in, in period specific as much as possible, but bring it into a usable, um, and, and affordable, um, piece of property for the town to, uh, to, um, make some money off of or whatever. And, you know, so the exterior will be nice. It will be something that, you know, all kinds of different, um, folks could use for a venue. And I think, uh, I think it's gonna be a, a nice asset for the town.
And we kept that concrete pad where the home and, uh, home economics room was because it was a poured concrete pad that you could repurpose to have picnic tables on. Well, you know, if there's something going on at the fairgrounds, you know, and you can use it inside and outside. And, uh, you know, there's been you know, a lot of happy accidents with finding things that could be used in great ways. So.
Another question, Chris?
I've, I've got two. Um, uh, and thank you for the update. I'm wondering if when you get to understanding what the budget will look like at the end of phase two, um, you could come back to us and, and let us know.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, and maybe in combination with a walkthrough. I'd be interested in doing it.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be nice. When we get to the point where we're focusing on, you know, they've got some ideas for finishing affordably the, the library section. I don't want to need the, the ceiling and, and whatnot. Um, I think that will give us a real good opportunity to have like an open house or something along those lines to kind of get a feel for what it's capable of being for the town.
Thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Don. Um, the library windows of which there are eight, the large ones, three on each side and one, um, on either side of the, uh, entryway in the front, those are two thousand. We've sold five of them. But my last count, the last count I have, we've had five. And then the ones across the back, which I always say, you know, Mr. Moody's office, Mr. Grover's office, those windows, um, are fifteen. And those are, there's four of those. And then there are the two little side lights. When you're facing the building directly, the two little side skinny narrow ones that aren't that big on either side of the library space, those are a thousand, of which one has, of those has been sold. So. So we're, um, making progress for those. People have been excited about that little extra thing. And then in the foyer, when you walk in off of the, every, you know, where we had our senior pictures taken on the, on the front porch. When you walk into that space, um, that's where we're going to have, you know, a plaque of the people outside of the windows that donated. So there'll be, um, a list of whoever has made donations and, um, but the windows will have a plaque directly next to them. And the other thing you've noticed too, if you went to the back of the building, the little dormer windows from the second floor, those are gone. That was another decision that was made that why are we gonna try to repair these gable, you know, when all that does is create roof issues and more windows to replace. And since it was on the backside of the building, we made the decision to remove those windows completely because they weren't gonna give light to anything other than the mechanicals and, um, have a flat roof back there.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All, Chris has. The next thing on the agenda is the uh, for, for uh, number twenty five. Last, oh, next to the last one for this year. And Chris will read.
Yeah.
The uh, items that are over a thousand dollars.
Audits Hardware sixteen twenty nine eighty seven. Barry Talbot and Royer, six thousand three hundred and. I've been reading with my reading glasses, six thousand three hundred twenty eight dollars and sixty cents. Blue Rock Earthworks, four thousand four hundred sixteen. Dubois and King, that was for the North Monmouth uh Water Main Extension. Two thousand four hundred and forty, EcoMaine, eighteen twenty eight fifty six. G D I Services. Three thousand one hundred eighteen thirty seven. La Rochelle Consulting, one thousand four hundred and seventy five. Mainly Paving, three hundred sixty seven thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and forty seven cents. Main Equalization Consultants, two thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. Mainly Technology Group, our I T support people, two thousand five hundred and fifty and seventeen cents. Main Ways to Energy, five thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars and ten cents. Mandarin, um, this is I T support for the library. That's. I know that from the time I spent on the library trustee board, one thousand fifty dollars. Um, New England Salt Company, eight thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety five cents. Nickerson and O'Day, there are contractors for the academy project. Forty nine thousand four hundred and fifty nine dollars and eight cents. Paul Designs, this is our architect, two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Nine Point Creative. Logo Design, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Santander Bank, it's a debt service. Two thousand and twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty one cents. The State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, eleven thousand six hundred and twenty three dollars and ninety eight cents. The State of Maine, D I F W, um, two hundred and twenty thousand. Six hundred ninety four dollars and sixty seven cents.
I make a motion, we uh, accept the warrant number twenty five for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three.
Motion made by uh, Ben and a second by Chris to approve the warrant. Uh, number twenty five for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. All those in favor? Thank you.
Can I make a polite request? At least three of you sign that tomorrow.
I signed it today.
I did too. I do in the evening after the meeting. So.
Thank you very much.
We still buying tall.
There was, apparently I tried to pay some money and didn't cross it in, which is pretty much.
Thanks for the cash flow.
We got paid.
Yeah, we got paid on the, on the payroll.
Oh, well, I'm definitely signing.
Can someone tell me why there's tables leaning up next to that shed?
I have no idea. I haven't been over there. So.
Right here. I dream I car on the shed.
Right here.
I don't know unless somebody put them there for the red. I don't know. We can take a peek and move them inside if they belong in here.
I don't know.
I'll go look.
Burned in here before a election. I know that, that, yeah, they're plastic, but I mean, they, you know, folding. You know, kind of like that one, not, not this white one, like the gray one. I see about six of them, but. I can find a good home for them if. It's, they're out there, things move when. You should sell it all this, we can always.
Yeah, well, they're up here and they're, yeah.
They weren't in this building though. They were not in this building.
Yep. All right, thank you. They never go over there.
Public Works doesn't know about it?
I do not. Moved everyone out the election.
Well, the shed is only for rec equipment. I wouldn't think it'd be storing cables in there. So I don't know about that. Thank you. Trying to click my button. I haven't clicked it yet.
I make a motion, Major.
The motion, I can, a second by Joe to adjourn. All those in favor?